Call to order, the August 17th Regularly Meeting of the Moundsview School Board. Good evening and welcome. We begin with item 1.2, adoption of the agenda.
They've been moved and seconded.
Any discussion? If none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The opposed, motion carries. It'll take us right into item 2.1, Open Forum and Public Comments. At this time, the Board will hear comments from the public. Interested speakers have signed up in the back of the room. Will acid speakers come to the podium as called this evening? Each speaker will be allotted a maximum of one minute. And we do have a lengthy list here of about 30 folks. We will start with Matt Witham, followed by Laura Alajid, and then Tim Root. So, welcome, Matt.
Hello, my name is Matt Witham, 2943 Sheldon Street, Roseville. I thought it was three minutes?
One minute this evening.
We were told three minutes.
That's what the website says.
One minute this evening.
All right, I'll make it snappy then. On May 13th, our Governor told us we could all take our masks off inside, okay? This is really simple. For the 30 days leading up to that, we had 266 people who died. That's about nine people per day for that 30-day window. And now, the last 30-day window leading up to this email we got yesterday, 57 people have passed away. That's about 1.9 per day. So, we're talking seven people less per day are dying because of COVID. And now, you're telling us we gotta put masks back on our kids when they go back to school? And nobody else is putting masks on out here in the world today when you go out and do stuff. And FYI, the Anoka-Hennepin County School District, as of right now, which is the largest in the state, does not require masks. They're leaving it up to the parents. I think that's an interesting note. And they're right next to us, which is right over here. No, I heard you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And then...
Will move to Laura Alajid.
You were advised by Chris Linas to get three minutes per person. Chris, that's what you told my husband.
Good work, guys.
For three minutes, that's what you committed to my husband on the phone. That's what the website says.
How did that go down?
It is at the discretion of the chair. It's one minute this evening.
We're happy for you.
Laura?
All right. My name is Laura Alajilat. I live in North Oaks. I am addressing you today not only as a parent of Moundsview School District children, but also as a pediatrician and as the wife of an ICU doctor who has seen so much death and suffering this year. I think we should all agree that our children need in-person learning this year. They need uninterrupted or least interruption possible in-person learning this year. This is achieved by masks because it keeps our children safe and it helps lessen the amount of time we are spending in quarantines. We, as parents, we all love our children and we all want the best for them. The new variants are showing to be affecting children more severely. So, the way I see it, if the mask requirement decision is the wrong decision, all we have lost is the price of a mask. While if we do, on the other hand, and we don't require masks at school and that decision is wrong, we could be putting our children's lives at stake. Thank you.
Thank you. Tim Root, followed by Kevin Reich, and then Patty Carroll.
COVID-19 has killed 354 children under 18 in the U.S. This is more than the top 75 U.S. school shootings combined. It has infected over 3.6 million children. The American Medical Association, the Minnesota Department of Health, the Minnesota, excuse me, the American Academy of Pediatrics, and countless other medical experts have made it clear that the best way to keep our kids safe in schools is to have them wear masks. Yet, the Board decided that rather than listen to the unanimous opinion of public health experts, the only voice that would be heard on the subject was that of Superintendent Lennox. He decided that the district's policy would ignore all health expert opinion save for the Ramsey County Health Department. And while I am grateful to the county for their guidance that has saved the day at the last moment, it seems the ultimate strategy of the district leadership was to ensure that no matter which group of people behind me wound up angry, the people in front of me would never have to publicly state their own opinion and have a position for which they could be held accountable.
Kevin Reich, followed by Patty Carroll and Alita Schulte.
Thank you. My name is Kevin Rich. I have two children in the Moundsview School District. I want to commend the Board and Superintendent Lennox for making the decision to require masks in the schools. Moundsview is a school district that follows science. It's a school district that believes in academic rigor. It believes in politeness and polite discourse. Unfortunately, already in this meeting, some people in this audience have abandoned that. And I hope that when future speakers are up here speaking their mind, everyone here will be respectful. Many states have implemented masks statewide for their school districts. Virginia, California, Connecticut, Delaware, Illinois, Kentucky, Louisiana, New Jersey, New Mexico, Oregon, Washington, the Milwaukee School District, the Madison School District, here in Minnesota, Minneapolis-St. Paul, Washington County, Brooklyn Center, Hopkins, Burnsville, Northfield, North-St. Paul, White Bear Lake, St. Louis Park, Duluth, Columbia, and Rochester. This district is in good company. Continue to follow the science. Thank you.
Patty Carroll, followed by Alita Schulte, then Sally Leich.
I'm sorry, but I prepared a three-minute speech. I'll do my best to shorten it up. But I sent you all a 13-page document yesterday with information links to numerous studies showing the harm being done by masks and the lack of any benefit to wearing them. I received a response from Mr. Weinhegen, who claimed that the district is required to follow guidance from Ramsey County. He claimed it's similar to vaccine record requirements and graduation standards and that the district needs to comply. But Ramsey County does not set standards for either graduation or for vaccine record requirements. Those are done by the MDH and the Department of Education. He then stated that the district's legal counsel advised the school board that going against Ramsey County guidance would expose the district to litigation. But of course, he had just claimed that there was no option to not comply with Ramsey County guidance. The response from the legal department proves that it's only guidance being provided by Ramsey County, which the district can take or leave. So, the bottom line appears to be fear of litigation.
You're at time. We'll move to Alita Schulte and Sally Leich.
All right, Alita Schulte, 28 Besant Lane, North Oaks. I have two children that attend Moundsview High School. I'm going to start by saying that the COVID mandates that have been and continue to plague our lives are not based on real data and science. It's data's being manipulated to create fear. This has created caseemic, not an epidemic. On July 21st, 2021, the CDC admitted that the PCR test does not differentiate between SARS-CoV-2 and influenza virus. It announced that labs should stop using the test on December 31st, 2021, when a new test will be available. But hello, if the test is not valid or reliable now, and we know that now, we should stop the use of it immediately. Nobody should be tested with it because it does not give any accurate results. I don't want to hear the school district telling families to get their students tested, not for any reason. Don't send test kits home. Asymptomatic people don't have or spread COVID. Routine testing is not recommended. Parents just say no. Do no more testing. Don't inflate the numbers. They use those numbers to shut down our schools, limit access, and try to impose mandates. No more.
Thank you.
Because the PCR test is not valid or reliable, contact tracing and quarantine...
We're at time?
Not be allowed.
We're at time?
Students' access to school is restricted. Results...
We'll move to Sally Leich, followed by Allison Ratwick and Elena Ochian.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Sally Leich. I'm a local family practice physician, wife of a pediatrician, and mother to two children in the district ages nine and 11. I speak tonight to offer an olive branch of updated information to anyone who feels masks and mitigation do not make sense. Some will use statistics that say COVID doesn't affect kids and that COVID is low. I can provide some updates. Our nation's number of hospitalized patients is at a six-month high currently.
What about Minnesota?
The number of daily deaths in the U.S. from COVID has doubled in the past three weeks. On Saturday, the number of children hospitalized with COVID in the United States hit a record high. That is because schools are back in session, I would surmise. In Minnesota, over the past two weeks, daily COVID cases are up from 1,900 to 3,000. So, we are going that direction as well. Some will say masks aren't safe. We've heard them quote the studies about carbon dioxide monitors out of Germany. In case you're not aware, that study has been retracted due to poor evidence.
We're at time.
Thank you.
We'll move to Allison Ratwick, followed by Elena Ochian, then Mira Vatsornier.
My name is Allison Ratwick. I have three children in the Moundsview School District. I am speaking today to reinforce the decision to follow Ramsey County in requiring universal masking in our school buildings. One of the benefits of our state is that in this case, we start the school later than some, so we're able to learn from them. I'd like to point out that the Pearl River County School District in Mississippi, which did not start with universal masking in place, has ordered its whole district into distance learning after 40% of the Pearl River High School was placed in quarantine after the first week. This is reported by the Mississippi Free Press. According to the CDC, Pearl River County and Ramsey County both have high levels of community transmission. In Hillsborough County, a mask mandate exists but allows for opt-outs. 8,400 students and 307 employees are isolated or quarantined in the first week. That's in Tampa. We know the Delta variant is more contagious. We know that most of our cases are due to Delta.
We're at time.
We can make a difference. Thank you.
We'll move to Elena Ochian, followed by Mira Vatsornier, and then Brian Vatsornier.
Hi, my name is Elena Ochian, and I'm here to speak on behalf of my son, David Ochian, who's supposed to enter Turtle Lake in fourth grade. I would like to ask you to consider offering an online distance learning option sponsored by the district. My son is not comfortable going back in person, primarily because there's a lack of safety measures. He is delighted by the mask mandate. However, there's a lot of questions about their safety around lunch, gym, and so on that I cannot answer for them, for him. And he also strived, actually, last year in the online learning. I'm gonna conclude by reading you a letter from my son. Dear Turtle Lake Elementary, we should do distance learning because the U.S. is in the red zone and because the Delta variant is so contagious and deadly. And if everyone catches the Delta variant, they will end up in the hospital and might die. And we should always wear masks in public, from David. I think distance learning also keeps less kids in the school, and I would like you guys to support the equity principle.
We're at time. Mira Vatsornier, followed by Brian Vatsornier, and then Dr. Neil Shaw.
Hi, everybody. I am Mira Vatsornier, and we have one 11-year-old going into Chippewa, hopefully, and two seven-year-olds that are attending Turtle Lake. As you can tell by their ages, they do not have the option to be vaccinated. So, I thank you for following the science and asking for a mask mandate in our schools for all people regardless of their vaccination status. That does bring parents of all children under the age of 12 some comfort. I want to say two more things. Firstly, keep following the science. Please develop plans to what will be done, organized in the schools, when the children are in recess and when the children are in the cafeteria. I realize that since you have just... Please, I'll hold my time until the disruption is over.
Can you please reset the clock?
It's 13. 13. 13. 13. 13. 13. 13. 13. 13. 13.
We've got about 15 seconds left.
Thank you. To recap, my first point was that we look forward to plans put forward by the district to continue to follow the science at times that the children must take off their masks. Lastly, the only sign I see in this room is the equity promise. May I remind all of you who know this well, distance learning is...
We'll move to Brian Vatsornier, followed by Dr. Neil Shaw, and then Shar...
Thank you.
Starts with a K.
Hello, my name is Brian Vatsornier. I live on Laurel Lane over here. Three students that were in this district, but I and many others are going to be leaving this district. You'll see here before you the sort of thing I'll be doing when I'm homeschooling my seven, seven-year-old girls who are going to be going into second grade. It's a number sentence, you know? So, if you hear any statistics tonight, know that 1% of the students in Moundsview Public Schools equals 117 students. Now, if there were a class size of 24, which I don't know if that's true. Is it? Is there a class size of 24 in the elementary, perhaps?
Yes.
That's intended, maybe not always. That would be almost five class sets, as you can see from my other way of representing, 117, which is one of the techniques that I'm gonna have to be using while I'm teaching second-grade math. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Neil Shaw, followed by Shar or Sherry, starts with a K, then Anthony Kristofferson.
Dr. Neil Shaw, North Oaks. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm a physician. The CDC's data is very clear that low-quality adult studies do not support masking in population to prevent the spread of aerosol-based disease. Dr. Mike Osterholm at the U, with whom I agree on very little, also agrees with this. Respirators can function unless you're talking about putting kids in respirators, which I have warned for the last year every day until I was vaccinated, they will not make any difference. Kids need to see faces. They need to develop normally. They need to be able to read emotions and talk to each other. They cannot view each other as viral vectors. This will pass. Every single person in here will get COVID if they've not already had it. It is endemic, and it will not go away. We need to move on. RSV and influenza claim more of our children every year than COVID did. We've lost no children and no teachers to COVID in Minnesota in the last year. I would urge you all to reconsider your decision and prioritize the emotional health development and well-being of our children and to look up to that equity promise so that all children, regardless of means, have the opportunity to attend in person without a mask on. We pulled our kids out. We have that means, many don't.
Charlie?
My name is Sheri Coy. Short. I live in New Brighton, and I think we really need to... Frank Feridi spoke as a sociology at University of Kent. He's well-known for sociology of fear, education, therapy culture, paranoid parenting, and sociology of knowledge. A statement that he made is very powerful in saying that relieving people of the burden of freedom in order to make them feel safe is a recurring theme in the history of authoritarianism. Now, as a 13-year-old, I had my only sibling die in an accident. I learned about death. My husband survived communism. At seven years old, fleeing a country, seeing children he grew up with blown up, and coming to America to find freedom. We need to acknowledge that our children are being abused.
And we love our freedom. Anthony Kristofferson, followed by John Van Overen and Jana Aho.
What was her first name, please?
Anthony Kristofferson.
Anthony Kristofferson, 11th Avenue. So many of these issues about what to do about COVID in schools can be boiled down to one question. How many dead kids are you willing to accept? And for a lot of people in this room, that number is as close to zero as possible. Others seem to have a different opinion. When we brought our issues to the attention of the superintendent this past month, since the CDC recommended on the 5th that all children should be masked, the response we got was that the outside counsel of this Board has recommended that you only abide by the minimum standards required. The minimum standards required and Boto Gil games where you don't have to make a statement on the record are not acceptable when our children's lives are concerned. It should be the job of this Board to institute whatever policies they best possibly can to protect the lives of the children of this district, not race to the bottom. I'm done.
Move to John Van Overen, followed by Jana Aho, and then Elizabeth Walden.
Hello, I'm John Van Overen. I live on Victoria Street. I feel uncomfortable giving my address with people videotaping in the audience rather than just sticking with the video that's getting posted online. So, my point is here that we have a number of parents here in solidarity for masks. When have you seen that? We are concerned. We are fearful that we are gonna be taken to a school that people are not wearing masks, not following precautions, and our kids will get sick. Even more so, I fear for those kids with special needs. Many of us have kids that are typically developing. They're healthy, they're okay. But what this does when we don't have a mask mandate, it makes it difficult for children with severe disabilities to be able to attend in the least restrictive environment for a free and appropriate education. I work at the Department of Education with Early Childhood Special Education, and this is something I believe very passionately in. All kids deserve an opportunity to learn, and masks are safe.
Jana Aho, followed by Elizabeth Walden. And then Dr. Katie Essie.
Hi, my name's Jana Aho. I live in New Brighton, and I have three kids in the district. I'm here because I believe our kids deserve better than a one-size-fits-all. I have a ninth grader, a sixth grader, and a fifth grader, and we did participate in in-person learning last year with mandated masks, and I had a completely different experience with all three kids. In particular, my fifth grader last year, I would say the experience was overall extremely detrimental to him health-wise, learning, behavior-wise, emotional. And ultimately, as a parent facing this possibility again, I have to make some decisions. So, I'm not here to argue masks or no masks. I'm here to say we need to have an option. Is it medical exemption? That wasn't available last year? Is it conscientious objection? That wasn't available last year?
We're at time.
You guys have said no, no...
Elizabeth Walden, followed by Dr. Katie Essie, then Lindsey Fort.
If it's mandated masks, then we need to look at options.
You're at time.
Hello, I'm Dr. Elizabeth Walden. I am the mother of three children in the district, the wife of a teacher in the district, and I am a medical physician who works with health partners. Every single healthcare system in the state has a mask mandate for all people in their facility. This is what the medical community has determined is safest. It's safest for our kids as well. Saying Delta doesn't affect children is a lie. It's not true. Children are at lower risk than our highest-risk population, elderly and chronically ill, doesn't mean they're not at risk. Deaths are down because our elderly are vaccinated. Our children cannot be vaccinated. We in Minnesota start school later, and we've been behind the COVID curve. We need to take advantage of that. We need to learn from the states who did not put appropriate mitigation strategies in place and look at their quarantine rates. A colleague recently received a request to transfer an intubated child from a pediatric ICU in Florida because they don't have beds. Think about that. They wanted to transfer an intubated child from Florida.
We're at time. Move to Dr. Katie Essie, followed by Lindsey Fort, and then Shelley Kramer.
Hello, my name is Katie Essie, and I practice as both an internal medicine and neurology physician in nursing homes here in the Twin Cities, as well as South Dakota, Wisconsin, and rural Minnesota. I have two children, an infant, as well as a six-year-old going into first grade. I spent this summer in hopes that my six-year-old, who never got to see the inside of a school last year, will finally be able to go to school safely. We're seeing a new phase of this disease. It's felt to be as contagious as chickenpox, and that's what I'm seeing. My friends in the medical community are seeing kids and their entire families get sick. Pediatric hospitalizations have reached an all-time pandemic high. But our best possible defense is to go back to the basics: masks, social distancing, and washing. Data from last year has shown that schools can open and stay open successfully with minimal infections, with consistent adherence to those three prevention techniques. Most cases of transmission were found to be in groups where mask-wearing compliance was low. You guys, even if one kid becomes seriously ill or dies, it's one too many.
Lindsey Fort, followed by Shelley Kramer, and then Andy Tilstra.
I'm really short. Hello, my name is Lindsey Fort, and I have two kids currently in the district and one three-year-old as well. And I, first of all, just want to say I'm in education, and I do really want to say thank you to everyone because it has been a really challenging last year and a half. And I do contact tracing, and I follow up with students at the college that I work in who've had this. And it's been a really serious year for everyone on all sides of the spectrum. And I think for me, the things that are really important that I've learned and seen with kids and with adults that are in college and learning, consistency is most important. Having classrooms where some are and some aren't doesn't work. It doesn't work for mental health. It doesn't work for effective learning strategies for teachers. It doesn't work for having people feel comfortable, calm, safe. I have kids at Summer Discovery this summer. They're all masked. They're so happy. They have a wonderful, like, wonderful time, and they've got extremely low cases. Or I think they've only had one in the whole thing, and it didn't have anything to do with Summer Discovery. I just want to say that I appreciate what you're doing, but consistency and keeping safety of our kids and our families is really important.
Shelley Kramer, followed by Andy Tilstra, then Diana Turco. Shelley Kramer?
I'm not speaking, thank you.
We'll move to Andy Tilstra, followed by Diana Turco, then Colleen Harold.
My name is Andy Tilstra. I'm from Shoreview. I have four kids in the district. First of all, to say I sincerely hope that people choose to get vaccinated and choose to wear a mask if they believe they have been exposed or have symptoms of COVID. We need to have uninterrupted in-person learning for our children. Last year, we had one or more of our four kids home for seven weeks straight after school had reopened. The teachers did an amazing job trying to adjust to the ever-changing situation, but it just simply didn't work. Our youngest is noticeably behind our other kids in reading after coming out of first grade, and it's, you know, the reality is it's hard to learn and to speak and to read when you can't see people's faces. So, I hope that we have a better strategy this year that keeps kids in school and allows kids to stay in school unless they are actually sick. And another thing that we need to be thinking about is what are the long-term strategies? You know, how can we lower the number of kids in classrooms? Build more classrooms? Give them more space so that we don't have to...
We're at time. Move to Diana Turco, followed by Colleen Harold, and then Tiffany Lovering.
Hi, my name is Diana Turco. I have three kids in the district and one more at home. I also have a background in genetics and public health, so timely to have that background more than ever. I want to talk about, I am happy, I would like you guys to continue your support of the mask mandate from here as the school year continues on, and talk about the gift of time that coronavirus or COVID is actually giving us to help prevent the spread. So, death, hospitalizations, severe illnesses are big statistics, but what we need to worry about is spread. And so, as a geneticist, we love analogies, and I think about variants, like the Delta variant, like our children. They're all different, but kind of related. This is not the best analogy. But we know that children may, if we think about infants, some were calm, went to sleep easy, others woke up every 90 minutes. We need that time to learn about it. And to learn about it, we need to wear masks to stop the spread.
We're at time. Move to Colleen Harold, then Tiffany Lovering, followed by Jennifer Smith.
Hi, I'm Colleen Harold. I live in North Oaks. I have four kids in the district. One is a graduate, one actually graduated from Hill Mary last year, one is a junior at Moundsview, and I have one that's coming in. So, I have a perspective of kids being five days a week in school every day versus the hybrid situation. I'm not even gonna talk about masks because I think that's not even in your control. My biggest fear right now is COVID is here, it's not going away. What is Moundsview doing to prepare for our kids? Because COVID, kids are gonna get tested positive for COVID whether they're vaccinated or not. or not. And what is your plan for these kids that are at home? There's no distance learning set up. They're not going to be handed a laptop through a window again. What is your plan to correct the distance learning, the learning loss that my kids suffered? I have a kid that has anxiety, depression. He thinks his future is done, he's never going to college. I think you guys really need to figure out, that's really what I'm more concerned about, is the mental health of my kid. I just buried my nephew last week because he committed suicide because of multiple depression issues, and COVID was one of the things. And that's about it.
Tiffany Lovering. Tiffany Lovering, followed by Jennifer Smith, and then Walken Anderson.
Can I let Patty finish with my time?
That's just fine.
Thanks. So I was saying, Mr. Weinhegen stated that his understanding from speaking to the attorney was that if we go against public health guidance and someone gets sick or worse yet dies, we could be liable for negligence, which I spoke to an attorney who confirmed that for a district to be held liable for negligence, they would first have to have a legal duty to eliminate all disease, which of course you do not. So there is no legal basis for the claim of being liable for negligence. It's actually ridiculous because no school would ever bother holding classes in person if they could be sued. On the flip side, though, if you force students and staff to wear masks with all the evidence showing the physical and psychological harm being caused by them, the school board will definitely expose the district to litigation. We did not sign in our contracts that we would allow the district to arbitrarily force us to wear face diapers because they fear being sued. In my 14 years in the district, I've been sneezed on, coughed on, and barfed on numerous times. It's part of the job, and I'm not afraid of a virus. I am afraid of being deprived of oxygen, however.
We're at time. Jennifer Smith, followed by Walken Anderson, and then Levon Griffin.
Hello, my name is Jennifer Schmidt. I have two daughters in this school district. I'm here, I am a PhD scientist, but I feel like you guys have heard the science, and we know that COVID is a problem and that we need to protect against it. I also have a master's in economics, so I'm going to remind us of the tragedy of the commons. When we have something that individual actions cannot prevent, my daughter who can't get vaccinated cannot keep herself from getting COVID, then we have to have a mandate so that there are not free riders who go around without masks enabling her to get COVID. When I get the ability to vaccinate her, then I can take that cost and that risk of her getting COVID. I can bring that internal and get her vaccinated to protect her. But right now, the only way we can protect our children with this being a free rider problem, with this being a tragedy of the commons problem, is if we mandate masks for all. Otherwise, people will not wear them.
And move to Walken Anderson, followed by Levon Griffin, then Jim Blood.
Good afternoon. My name is Wahtem Daddell Anderson. I have two kids in the school district, and I'm a resident of New Brighton. I've worked in higher education for over 24 years, and I am grateful to the Ramsey County Commissioner for making the decision about masking, because it was clear that the district was not going to make that move. That I find greatly troubling. But the mask issue is only a small part of the issue. There is no plan. There was no plan before the commissioner made the decision to change to masking. There is no plan in this district to address what happens when, and when will happen. At present, it has taken eight days for a million people to come down with the Delta variant. In months prior, it took two months to get to that number. This is an exponential problem. You teach math and exponentials in school. Use the math if you don't want to use the science.
Levon Griffin?
My name is Levon Griffin, and I want to address the elephant in the room, and that is the fact that nobody is addressing that where there is risk, there must be choice. Why are you taking the choice away from us? So obviously, I have my sign, you know where I stand, but I wanted to read some statistics. This is off the Minnesota Department of Health website. The flu, 2016, 2017, I'll just go back a couple years, 3695 Minnesotans had the flu. 27, 2018, 6,446. 2018, 19, 2543. 2019, 2020, 4,022. Last year, 2020 to 2021, any guesses?
Zero.
Thirty-five. Okay? So that is strictly from the Minnesota Department of Health.
We're at time.
And so everything is COVID. Everyone is so-
We're at time? We're at time? We're at time? Jim Blood, followed by Brian Miller, then Alicia Diaz. Is Jim Blood here? Good evening.
All right. I don't have too much to put into this. One thing I want people to think about is when, all we hear about is pay attention to the science. If you take a look at studies that were done pre-pandemic, basically trials that are randomized and that were performed prior to the pandemic, you will see that all those studies conclude that masks don't help. If you take a look at anything on Google today, if you do a search, go ahead and do it, you will find that masks are the only solution. So I think maybe we should look at the science and look at that history of the science, and look at the science with real randomized trials, and you'll see. The other thing I want to say is, I don't see the plan, what you're going to do when the kids get sick and they need to stay home, okay? And the third thing I want to say is, my son will not be coming to Mounds View if he has to wear a mask.
We move to Brian Miller, and then Alicia Diaz. Brian Miller, yes. Good evening.
Brian Miller, St. Albans Street, Shoreview. I have a daughter who is five years old, will be going to kindergarten, maybe. Anyway, I keep hearing about cases and getting sick. I'm not concerned about cases. I'm not concerned about what a lab can detect in somebody's nose that's not causing harm. What I'm concerned about is real effects. I'm worried about there's only three kids in the state of Minnesota since the beginning of pandemic who have died from COVID. That's out of 1.3 million. That is .00022% chance. What I am concerned more is the intentional self-harm. Fifty-eight kids have died from that. I want us to consider the collateral damage. I want us to consider the soft skills that are lost and the emotional harm, and not just close our eyes and just consider just the one topic. It is a whole issue that we need to think about and talk about, and masks are not the answer, because they shield us from one small threat and expose us to many others that are known and unknown.
Alicia Diaz?
Hi, my name is Alicia Diaz. I live in Shoreview. I am a registered nurse, and I have done several ICU contracts throughout the state. And compared to the other medical professionals, that gives me a little glimpse at a lot more hospitals than just the one that they work at. It's not what everybody makes it seem to be. It's not what the news makes it seem to be. The cases are not as crazy as everybody makes it seem to be. In Ramsey County alone, the board wants to say that they are getting their guidance just from Ramsey County. So let's talk about those statistics. Since March of 2020, when the pandemic started, 54,584 cases of COVID were diagnosed between the ages of five and 14. Nine percent of those. When we talk about deaths, 889 deaths since March of 2020. That's 1.6% of all cases. It's not crazy. It's not 50% of people with COVID are dying. 1.6% of people-
We are at time?
In our age group, five to 14.
We are at time. This concludes the open forum portion of our evening. On behalf of the board, I want to thank each of you who showed up and shared your thoughts today, as well as the countless individuals who have called and emailed over the course of the last several weeks. Note, the board has read each of these messages and listened to every voicemail. As we heard tonight, there are clearly two sides to the issue that's being discussed. They share one thing in common that I've observed, and that's an intense desire to the benefit of all of our kids. I certainly don't know the right answer, but I continue to take pride in the fact that our school district and this board doesn't manage or govern the school district by the loudest voices or public opinion. At the last board meeting of June, I reminded the community that our board only employs one employee, and that's the superintendent. As a policy governance body, we work in partnership with the superintendent to manage the policies and financial health of the district and work as partners as he and his team carry out the professional work of managing our school district. What we're talking about here is the superintendent managing to the clear guidance of public policy and legal counsel that has been provided to the superintendent and the school board. Specifically, per our own board policy SL 0212, the superintendent does not have the authority to knowingly place the district at unreasonable legal or fiduciary risk. Since Ramsey County Public Health used the term "require," that is the guidance he needs to follow and the guidance that has been provided by our legal counsel. Similarly, the board has been advised that we should not go against the guidance to avoid any legal or fiduciary risk, noting that if we do not follow the guidance, it could be used against the district as evidence that it did not use reasonable care. Again, we appreciate all of the community input, and have a great night.
Give us some options.
We're going to move into item 2.2. We're going to ask Donna, we're going to ask Donna to read the gifts.
All right. Thank you, Jonathan. There were 10 gifts for schools and programs received this period for a total of $4,716.12. And there were 29 gifts received for the Ralfreeder food shelf this period for a total of $46,763.55. It is recommended that the board accept these gifts and extend our thanks to the donors.
Thank you. Additional announcements, upcoming meetings, September 21st, 6:00 PM, a work session of the board, and September 21st, following that, at 7:00 PM, a regular meeting of the board. We'll move to item 2.3, Superintendent's Report. Superintendent Lennox.
Thank you, Chair Weinhegen. Tonight, there are a number of executive team reports on the agenda, so I'm actually foregoing my time, and will jump in with them during those presentations later in the agenda.
Thank you. I'll take us to item 3.0, Approval of the Consent Agenda. Entertained a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll move to item 4.1, 2021-2022 Enrollment Update, and we will invite Bernice Humdek. And welcome, Bernice. This is the first time you've been in front of the board in a formal meeting. We're glad to have you.
Thank you. This evening, we're here to discuss enrollment. Enrollment projection was at 11,454. We're currently sitting with 11,556, which is an increase of 102. We will be reviewing enrollment weekly and following the school board-approved class assumptions. September, we will recap the enrollment as students return. Any questions?
Do you have any questions for Bernice?
I would just like to make sure I understand the, so as parents, we are sent out, you know, verification, online verification that we complete for our students. Is that then the actual column?
Correct. What they do is they do a projection to say, it's called a migration.
Yep.
Here's your enrollment from last year, and based on what your historical migration was, that's how the grades roll forward. And then we have someone who connects with all the schools and says, what is your building path for enrollment at this time?
So, Sandy, schools are currently tracking that information from families. So as families are making choices, they're talking to their, usually the school office, you know, staff, dean at the secondary, and these numbers reflect the most up-to-date that each of our schools have. So as that changes, we do weekly counts, and that will continue to change and evolve, and we'll keep the board apprised of what that looks like as we move forward.
So over, you know, I think it was last year, we started this online verification, you know, I don't know if that's the right word, but process that kind of took place of a more simple process. And it's a little onerous, and I know our family just did ours late last week. So I guess my question is, do the actuals reflect only when I'm doing that process, or is there something else? You know what I mean?
Yeah, most of our schools actually have running lists. They have their own spreadsheets of who they have, who they've talked to, phone calls, follow-ups.
Unrelated to that?
Yep, in addition.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions for Bernice? Great, thank you. And we will see you back again next time. We'll move to item 4.2, Readiness for School Opening, and welcome Darren Johnson in your new role. Good evening.
Good evening, members of the school board. I'm here tonight to provide an update on our readiness for the new school year. First, new teacher welcome. Starting the spring, building principals began hiring for open teaching positions for the 21-22 school year. To date, there have been approximately 60 teachers hired to work with students for the upcoming school year. This is fewer than what is typical in a given year, which is good news as we think about our goal to not only attract, but retain quality staff. This week, these new teachers participated in our district's new teacher orientation, meeting with both district and building leaders throughout the week. We are excited to welcome this talented group of educators to our Mounds View community. Next, construction. Final work at Irondale High School is wrapping up. Terrazzo flooring has been replaced, and final touches are being done on the stairs in the front entryway. Additionally, 11-month walk-through meetings have taken place this summer at buildings that were turned over to the district last summer and fall. Summer projects. At Mounds View High School, a section of the roof began being replaced in mid-July. Progress continues at Bel Air Elementary School and Highview Middle School on roofing replacement projects that also began this summer. It is expected that all of these roofing projects will be considered to be substantially completed by August 26th. As well as inside the schools, various flooring replacement projects have taken place across the district, as well as the remodeling of the libraries at both Bel Air and Valentine Hills Elementary School. Preparing for buildings for the upcoming school year have also taken place. Throughout the summer, outdoor maintenance crews and site-level custodian departments have been hard at work preparing for the upcoming school year. Classrooms and indoor spaces were cleaned, and minor maintenance projects were completed throughout the district. The annual painting rotation cycle continued. Prior to students returning to school, landscaping work will also be completed to include the top dressing of mulched areas. The hard work and dedication of our custodians and maintenance crew is greatly appreciated. In summary, I am pleased to report that schools will be ready to go when students return in person on Wednesday, September 8th.
Thank you, Darren. Any questions for Darren?
No, I would just extend a thank you, not only to Darren, but all of the folks involved in that work over the summer. There's a lot happening by a lot of different employees, a lot of different groups, so just very, very much want to thank them for everything that's been happening over the course of the summer to prep our schools for students.
Okay, thank you. We're going to move to item 5.1, District Operational Plan. There is action this evening, Superintendent Lennox.
Correct. So, board members, as you may know, we have annually put together our district operational plan. So the plan for the 2020-21 school year is in your packet this evening. We had the opportunity to see this several times and talk through that. There are two priority areas and six goals in total, and we've discussed those at the work session and created the final draft based on your feedback, which is in front of you in your packet this evening. So we've made no further edits or additions to that plan, and at this time, then, we are submitting it as the 2020-21 district operational plan and looking for your approval.
Questions on that? I know we've spent quite a bit of time digging into it. There are no questions? I entertain a motion to approve the district operational plan as presented?
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll move to item 6.1, Summer School and Summer Work by Teachers, and welcome up Angie Peshal and Carl Brown. Good evening.
Well, it's that time of year, why don't I come before you to share some information with you about all the great work that's been happening this summer in Mounds View Public Schools. So three parts of that presentation tonight. We're first going to share with you what our teachers have been up to during the summer. We'll also share some information about the summer academic programming, and then Carl will unclose with the- will close with what's been happening with community and some of the recruitment activities we've had for students this summer. So first of all, start off with teacher summer work. So all of our teachers engage in some professional learning over the summer through a professional learning community that they are part of. So they spend up to 12 hours during the summer working on plans for the upcoming year, and that includes looking at student data as students are coming in. So they are looking at the students that they'll be seeing in their classes and courses for next year. They're making adjustments to the curriculum. They're looking at resources they have available, seeing what they might need to add to that, as well as looking at some of the assessments that they are working on. So all teachers have engaged in that process, are engaging in it in the next couple of weeks. We also offer opportunities for teachers to engage in professional development courses. These are courses taught by teachers in the district, and they're optional courses for teachers. So on this slide here, we've got the courses that are being offered this summer and then the number of teachers that have opted to participate. So collegial coaching is a course where teachers learn how to coach one another in a peer-review process to help one another with their craft of teaching. We have 25 teachers enrolled in that. Foundations of Effective Teaching, 25 teachers are partaking in that course. Instructional Strategies at Work, there are 14 teachers there. And then we also have a capstone experience, which allows teachers to engage in an action research process throughout the entire year coming up. So we have nine teachers that have signed up and started their process to work through an action research topic of their choice. In addition, teachers have been engaging in some curriculum writing. So the third-grade teams across the system are working with a new curricular resource for word study. So they're getting some professional developments around that, and we also have our math teams that are doing some curriculum work with the standards and some assessment writing. Middle school science, you may recall that we are working, starting to work on the process of adopting new science standards. So this year, we're starting with third grade and sixth grade, and so those teams have been meeting to put some work in on getting those new standards implemented. And then the language arts team at the middle level has also been doing some work around literacy. Ninth grade English has been doing some curriculum work, as well as 10th grade social studies courses across the two high schools. So now let's talk a little bit about some of the academic programming. We had approximately 400 students who participated, who were invited and attended regularly at the elementary level. The majority of the teachers currently work in the schools. I think this is important to point out, because just coming off of the year that we did, it was taxing for everyone, including the teachers. And so to ask them to give us some time in the summer to devote to helping students with extending their learning throughout the year, we were wondering if we'd have teachers who, you know, if they needed a break, we would understand. And we had a... The majority of the teachers who chose, they did choose to work with the students and stay in the program. So the majority of the teachers currently work in our schools, so the students were familiar with them, they understand the processes, the curriculum materials, so that was really a benefit for our students. We were able to have smaller class sizes. Typically, we run 12:1 for summer school. We were able to run 6:1 for summer school this year, and the focus was on literacy, math, and then also a focus on social-emotional learning for students. Many of the programs use the STEAM framework, the Science, Technology, Engineering, Arts, and Math framework, and that allowed opportunities for students to engage in learning that highlighted creativity, curiosity, and fun as they engage in those activities. So just a couple of success stories we wanted to share with you from the elementary level. The teachers did report that a number of students who engage in distance learning all year did choose to come to some in-person learning for the summer, and seeing their peers that maybe they had only seen on the screen and show up in person. Seeing those peers in person was a success story that teachers talked about. That hands-on STEAM learning activities, sundials was one of the activities talked about, magnets and marbles, looking at gravity, so some exciting hands-on activities for students. And then also, we gave students access to school-linked mental health supports and a partnership that we have with Family Innovations, and teachers and the leads at schools said that we had students participating in that as well. As we look at summer 2022 programming, we want to review the length of the program, so we extended it this year. Typically, it runs for four weeks. We extended it to six weeks. Some thought that that might be too long, maybe two, three-week sessions, or maybe a four-week session again, so we'll continue to review the length of the program. Transportation was called out as an issue as well. We had community pickups, and for some families, it was difficult for them to get to some of those. Some of those locations were far away, so we'll continue to look at that. And then also, we need to work on our communication to families about progress and growth, more frequent communication, and more efficient ways of doing that is what we want to look at for our elementary summer school programming for next year. So at the middle level, we had 135 students who attended regularly. All of the teachers in this programming were from our districts. We didn't go outside the district at all to hire for those positions. Again, a lot of STEAM-based programming, comprehensive course offerings, really focusing on literacy, math, and the social-emotional development of those scholars. Work to improve student retention in math, reading concepts, providing some additional intervention for those students who needed some additional supports, and then also building enhancing relationships with peers and staff as they were in the buildings. A few success stories. Sixth graders found their voice as they were more comfortable being in the building on a regular basis. Seventh and eighth graders were taking on some leadership roles, and excited to see them take on those leadership roles in the upcoming year. And then again, the connection between the peers and the teachers and the students was also called out as a success. We want to look more closely at the assessment process and communicating that with staff as they're in the summer school program. How do we know the students are growing? So we need to work on that. And then the increase in the participation in the program. We had more sixth graders and eighth graders, and so looking at what can we do to make that a more exciting program for all students that are invited to that. Let's see. And then high school, our credit recovery. So we had approximately 400 students attend regularly, and 165 credits were earned. To give a little perspective, in the 20... Last year was a little bit different because we focused on seniors and giving them credit recovery, so this year, we offered it to nine through 12. And in that year, we had 65 credits earned. So we had over 100 more credits earned by students in our summer programming at the high school level, so that for sure is to be celebrated. In addition to that, students made progress in 46 other classes. We're documenting that, so we're not taking the whole class again, so when they come back in credit recovery in the fall, they'll be able to pick up where they left off. So they're real close to earning that credit that they need for graduation. Another success at the high school level was students' ability to use the new flex spaces. So our way of summer school programming at the high school for credit recovery, it's really personalized, and students have opportunities to do some independent learning, and as flex spaces were great for students to be able to do that. They could collaborate with others when they needed to, and then also work independently. So that was called out, and we're thankful for having that space. The mantra they had was high expectations with high empathy, high standards without creating obstacles. So removed a lot of obstacles for kids so that they could earn those credits to make sure that they're on track for graduation. Again, communication with families, want to increase that, and transportation is also called out as something we want to get for our high school students, those needing credit recovery, and how communication that they get into our spaces.
Can I just interrupt you for a moment and back you up?
Yeah, sure. We're gone.
Sorry. You talk super fast.
I know, I do. Waiting for a moment.
Processing a little slower.
Sure.
On the middle school side, can you talk a little bit more about that assessment process, a clear understanding of the assessment process, and, you know, clearly communicating that with staff?
Yep.
Does that mean like who is, who has access to the middle school programming, or can you talk more about that?
Two parts of that. So how are we determining who we're inviting to the summer school programming pieces? And then secondly, once they're in, how do we know they're making growth? So how do we know that they're in this program and that it's helping them to achieve growth? We've got... It's not a systematic way of looking at that. We're having individual teachers look at that, and so we need to look more closely at what that assessment process looks like, and that it's similar across our three middle schools.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
All right. Well, Angie talked quite a bit about the academic side of things, and I'm going to move on and talk about some opportunities we had this summer with community. Typically, we would classify these under enrichment opportunities, and just from this list, these are the four kind of main areas I will talk about tonight. Our summer enrichment programs, kind of broad areas, summer band, summer orchestra, and then also, we do quite a bit of sports camps and clinics across the district. All these programs, we are at most of our schools, so not every school is in use, but quite a few of them. Some of them are tied to our summer school programs and then our high schools and other areas. And I just want to say, I appreciate the opportunity for our community education staff to work with our principals, office staff, custodians, and other building staff to share our district spaces. It wouldn't be possible without utilizing all of our spaces with the number of programs we do. So a big thanks to everyone who's helped out in the summer. If I move on to our kind of education opportunities that are in summer enrichment programs, kind of the big areas on this, day camps. So back in the spring, we had talked about block schedule, that was something we put in place. First time we did it was two years ago, so last summer was a different summer, but we had tried that out, and basically, it's opportunities are four-day schedules. Parents can choose an AM block, a PM block, or if they want to build it together, they can have a full-day option. Kind of jumping through the Friday field trips, if you add that Friday field trip day, it's something where we have a five-day program that's available for families, and a lot of people utilize that. Some people would pick and choose different times with that. Our schedule's been very flexible. You didn't have to lock in for the full summer, and it's something that you can really, if you want to take only an AM class or only a PM, you could do that and really build your summer with a plan. We also had a lunch bunch feature, which was just really a supervised lunch program, which was something that if you wanted to take an AM block and a PM block, it provided full-day supervision for families. And those programs, we ran camps basically every week this summer. This is our last week we're running it, and those were all at Turtle Lake this summer. So a great summer with a lot of opportunities. 1,057 students spread out across the summer. Some were repeats where they went to a number of classes, and many were students that either attended an AM class or a PM class. Summer Fun was this kind of a traditional day camp. Couple of years ago, one of the things we had heard from families are that they were looking for maybe a more laid-back or a less expensive opportunity for families as they're piecing things in, and this is kind of the traditional day camp that is built with arts and crafts, just different activities, gym time, playground time. And once again, it follows that same block schedule, so if you wanted to take a STEAM class in the morning and then pick up something in the afternoon. So a little over 300 students for that. Lunch Bunch was 300 in there. And then with the field trips, we had about 170 students. The summer was, you know, a lot of times what we found is many families appreciate having a Friday off. If they want to do something different, they can. And we also saw some families that really Fridays were the only thing they wanted to do. It was a specific field trip. We went to Dodge Nature Center, Bunker Beach, I can't remember all the places. Crayle, they experienced a number of different ones. So fun variety, and people could really pick and choose what they were comfortable with and what they wanted to attend. And then at the elementary level, the last one was a new program called Afternoon Adventures. This is one where we tied it with each of three of our elementary summer school sites, and so we had opportunities for, to have students that attended our summer school program if they wanted to pick up an additional afternoon program for a couple of hours, filled with arts and crafts, outside time and things, and it was a new opportunity. So for the first summer, when it's kind of hard to get the word out in something that people aren't aware of, we had 65 students, but I know a lot of students enjoyed the time in that program.
Can I ask you, on the numbers here, how did this... It seemed like we had much more extensive offerings this summer. How did the numbers compare to prior years?
I would say that they are, they were approaching two years ago, but having additional opportunities and knowing that this was kind of an uncertain summer, I think it would show that we saw more families than we typically would have.
Were we able to meet everyone who wanted to participate, or did we have to turn anyone away?
I would say, with the exception of some classes that filled, we had opportunities where usually we could work people in, and even when some families would find out there was a waitlist that may not be, we couldn't add a class.
Yep.
Usually, we had other opportunities, so yeah, tried to get everyone in. And we also noticed, just as the summer went on, we have a list of some classes that were really popular, so next year, probably anticipating that popularity, offering additional classes or sections of it. A lot of the teachers or vendors we work with, if we know that in advance, they can add another teacher, and we can just build another class for that, so we'll be looking at that. All right, summer band. So traditionally, in the district, we've got a summer band opportunity. It's been an optional program for families to either get additional band or have a new beginning program. With band, it's our fifth-grade students that would come into the program. Looking at that, we had about 201, or 201, about, students that participated in that. It's an opportunity for them to get a jumpstart on summer, but at the elementaries, they can also, if it didn't work out this summer for them to be in band, they can start up in the fall and work with their band teachers. But it was something that a number of families were participating. Looking at the middle school options, there's also a couple of different opportunities for kids that may not have started in elementary school, where they can be a beginning student and start out there, so they would continue to go play in middle school and go from that. And then there's also an additional middle school opportunity for current band students to continue playing, so kind of an advanced, larger group for middle school students that would want to continue. So a little over 200 students for both of those band opportunities. With orchestra, grades four, five, and middle school, same thing, fourth and fifth grade. So orchestra starts a year earlier. With fourth grade, we had about 260 students, and fifth, 121. And then there was also a middle school boot camp option, so incoming sixth graders that may not have started orchestra but decided they wanted to, could participate in that. And then there was also kind of a smaller or a large group orchestra program for students who are currently playing. So successful summer with that all across the district for those different opportunities. And then the last piece is looking at sports camps and clinics. We ran the majority of these at both high schools. 620 students participated, so a lot of high school-age students that are working with developmental camps with many of our high school coaches that are participating. As of yesterday, they were probably, anyone who was in fall season was hoping that preparation was beneficial. But we also had programs for middle school students and even some younger students who were these developmental programs, oftentimes either working with our high school coaches, helping them, you know, see themselves as a future Mustang or a future Knight, or working with our youth associations and having kind of a developmental path for students that want to participate. One of the new programs we also did, kind of like the Summer Fun program, was we did a middle school sports and fitness program, and we had 85 students across three middle schools that ran right after the summer school program for the six weeks we ran summer school. That was a lot of fun, and it was something that we haven't had a lot of just general opportunities for middle school students, so we're looking to dig in with some feedback from that and understand how we can improve that and try to give more opportunities for students. Because I know oftentimes in middle school, some families just like to have a little structure, and they know their kids can, are getting older and have some freedoms themselves, but like to lock in a few things. And so we have opportunities to do some inside and outside sports and look at expanding that in the coming summer, and also in the school year too, trying to capitalize on some of those pieces.
Yeah, busy summer, and like Carl said, I just want to shout out to the teachers and the administrators of the buildings who made that all happen, coming off the year that we came off of. So some great experiences for students, and a shout-out to them for making those such positive experiences for everybody involved.
Absolutely.
Angie, just one quick question going back. We had 165 credits recovered, which is terrific, and last year it was 65. Is this a result of some distance learning, do you believe?
Actually, the 65 was from two years ago.
Oh, two years ago.
Yeah, because last year, we just focused on our seniors in order to get them to graduate. So we didn't include those numbers in it, so we tried to do it to a more typical year, so.
It was more typical.
Yeah, it was a great year of learning in the summer and credit recovery. It's really going to help our students start off the year on a much better place than they would have had we not had that opportunity for them.
No, that's a big deal.
Yeah, for sure.
Great. Thanks for the update.
Thank you.
Lots of good work.
Thank you.
We'll move to item 7.1, Updates. We'll start with AMSD and Legislative. Mr. DeMay.
All right, I attended a meeting, I believe, a week ago Friday at AMSD. As usual, we went through our legislative review, a lot on funding. I think we've talked about that a little bit. The legislature was fairly generous to public education, also went over some new state laws, discussed the Page Amendment, and, you know, some other curriculum issues. I guess there's a new social studies standard being reviewed, and that's open for comment. And so that is my report.
Thank you, Mary Jo, nine sixteen, Ramsey County League.
Okay, thank you, um, the Ramsey County League, uh, this month, uh, it was last week, had a networking out in, uh, the park in Roseville, out of civilian, and that was very well-attended. Nine sixteen, the first meeting with, uh, the new superintendent, Val Rae Bowe, so, uh, we welcomed her officially to, uh, nine sixteen, and started the year with the usual kinds of, uh, uh, things that boards do to start the year off, so. She's at the helm and is already doing a great job. That's it.
Excellent, we moved to item eight point one, school board member reports. Anything to report?
I do, just a quick thing, um, let me look over here, uh, I went to the Valentine Hills PTO meeting last night. Uh, quite a few new people at, at the PTO board, but also, um, uh, I was able to meet as well as the rest of the attendees, Melissa Rivera, who's the principal at Valentine, and, um, she talked about her background and thinks she is, uh, learning being in Moundsview Schools and her vision for, uh, elementary students in Valentine, which aligns, of course, with the vision for the rest of our elementary students, so it was great to, to meet her, I think, uh, she's got a very diverse background, and I think she's gonna be a very good principal.
Great.
I just want to make sure we recognize our nutrition service staff, I know they've worked tirelessly this summer to provide, um, lunches for kids over at Irondale, and, um, we all really appreciate that, so I wanted to say thank you to them.
I had a nice chat with the previous president of Pinewood PTA, and they're transferring leadership, uh, they were, uh, pleased last, late last year, they raised some money to have some teacher appreciations and book for the summer, and also, another big thank you to our teachers and the staff this summer. We want kids in the schools, and, uh, from the report we got, uh, we, uh, we had the kids in the schools, and we made great progress, so, uh, big thanks to the teachers and the staff.
Um, I, I guess I just would like to, um, just close out the, you know, the, our agenda today, and I know that others have maybe comments to make as well, but definitely want to recognize and thank all the community members that showed up today, it's obviously a lot of passion, um, all around the issue of masking and kids in school, and I respect everyone's opinion in our community and appreciate your time. Um, just difficult decisions for school boards, and, um, we're all in it together, so, thank you.
Heidi Diane? So I would just echo, um, the thanks for everybody who came tonight, as well as the thanks to our teachers, custodians, entire staff, they've been working hard, great report from, um, from Mr. Johnson. Also a reminder, this is our last board meeting before kids get back on buses and head back to school, so if John Tingula were here, he would remind us to watch out for the kiddos as they are getting on and off the bus, and enjoy the rest of summer. Is there anything else to come before the boardroom? We are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.